Good evening. Welcome to the School Board Meeting of Independent School District 271 Bloomington Public Schools. Today is Monday, November 23rd, 2020, and it is 7:00 PM. The school board meeting tonight is being conducted remotely via Hangouts Meet. It is being livestreamed by BCTV and will be replayed per the usual BCTV replay schedule. We'll go into roll call. So all board members who are present, please indicate so. Director Bebe?
Here.
Director Tom Bennett?
Here.
Director Maya Olson?
Here.
Director Jim Sorm?
Here.
Director Heather Starks?
Here.
Director Don Steiger?
Here.
And Nellie Corman is here. So all board members are present tonight. Now we're going to move into our, the Pledge of Allegiance. So, yep. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. Thank you for putting the flag. Okay, so next I would like to move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions about the agenda tonight? Any comments? No? Okay, so those in favor of approving the agenda for today, please say aye. Director Bebe?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorm?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Steiger?
Aye.
And Nellie Corman, aye. The agenda has been approved. We have recognition of students, staff, and public. And we're going to start with our Student School Board Representative Reports. And so tonight we have, once again, Tristan Pye and Juma Waganda. Who would like to start?
Hi, I can start first.
Go ahead.
First off, I hope everyone's having a great Monday evening. So for my student report, we did have a Virtual Spirit Week last week to promote school spirit. And we did it all virtually, spreading it on Instagram, Snapchat, and all social media. Also with the new season coming into play as well, fall sports have ended, and I feel as if they went successful. Despite COVID, they followed proper precautions, and unfortunately, it's looking like COVID is spiking back up again for winter sports, but it all is not lost. And for our student governments, we did actually have a successful clothing drive, which all those clothes are going to be donated to various churches and other places, and access for kids and others that need it. We also did the thank you postcards for our teachers that have been working so hard during all this online ruckus and COVID through an online forum, as well as just regular postcards. And something else we are starting as well is a discussion forum. It's something we want to get started with. We want to have like a special guest come and just talk about like certain topics. It can be really vague, like ACT prep, or mental illness, or racism, et cetera. We just want to be able to discuss that as a student group with somebody leading in order to further educate ourselves. And another thing we have been including as well, our lunch table Fridays. So we know that with everything being online, the connection between students and teachers, as well as students and students, haven't been as they usually are, especially with online. So we open up to like having meets during lunch on Fridays in order for like students to gather together and just talk and eat and have fun. Also, with the end of the trimester happening, we did get a lot of feedback, and I see there's a lot of changes being made as well. I know hub attendance was one problem that kept being brought up to me, as well as the sync lengths being only 30 minutes. There wasn't enough time to really learn anything, at least from what was told. But that is it for my student report. And unfortunately, after this, I will take a leave, as I do have finals tomorrow that I need to prepare for. So before I leave, I do want to say that please continue taking proper precaution for COVID, mask up, social distance, wash your hands, be safe, be thankful for the little things. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Pye.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Tristan, I know you're leaving. As you work with that student group and you need people to come help out with the conversations that you talk about, please, I'll send you an email as well, but I'd be happy to help you out with that. Thank you.
That was very nice. Thank you, Mr. Kow. Ms. Waganda?
Okay, awesome. Hey, guys, I'm Juma. I'm a senior at Jefferson. Just like Tristan said, our fall sports wrapped up too, especially with the new orders in place. So including volleyball and football, which they did a really good job this year. My heart goes out to winter sports as well. I hope that hopefully you guys have somewhat of a season. Our National Honor Society had their first service project, and they partnered with the ACLU, which is American Civil Liberties Union, to just like get people to register to vote, which was really cool. And then in late October, we also did have a Virtual Spirit Week, and we, it was like really cool to just see everyone participating on Instagram and stuff like that. Because even though we're not in person, people were really still decked out with school spirit. And it isn't to that. We had our homecoming ceremony, and I just want to say a big congratulations to all of our 2020 royalty. Carter Hanson was named king, and I'm honored to be selected to stand next to him as queen. And then for the health of our student body, especially mentally, I know that motivation is like nonexistent anymore. Getting things done is becoming really daunting, I know, because like personally, it's hard. But I really want to encourage everyone to continue to just work hard and try your best, especially with it being finals week. We have one day left to try, so make it count. And then lastly, I really do want to give a huge shout out to our principal, Dr. Anderson, as well as the teachers and staff, for just continuing to work like super hard for your students. Your work doesn't go unseen, and I don't know, I just really appreciate all of you guys. But yeah, I hope that you guys have a great holiday break, if you guys get a break, just like us. They'll also be leaving because finals and that calc test tomorrow, I'm nervous, but thank you.
Thank you. And we understand that you have to leave because you have to be ready for those finals. So thank you for being here tonight, and feel free to leave when you need. And good luck. Good luck to all of our students, their finals. Thank you. Okay, so recognition of the public. On the school board page of the district website, there is a link for Bloomington residents, district staff, students, and parents to submit a comment to the school board. Submitted comments might be read during the recognition of the public portion of the meeting, providing that the comment is not related to topics on tonight's agenda and guidelines outlined on the comment form have been followed. We will allow up to 15 minutes to listen to public comment that has been submitted prior to the meeting. If the board receives comments that exceed the 15 minutes, those comments not read during the meeting will be shared with the school board. Should there be no comments, or only a few that take less than the allotted 15 minutes, the meeting will proceed. A reminder that the school board listens to the, to public comment and does not respond during the meeting. Typically, matters are referred to administration. So, Mr. Kaufman, do we have any public comment for tonight?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Fujitaki, and our others that are joining in tonight, either virtually or as part of the meeting. We have eight submissions this evening. Seven of those submissions do cover the discussion, a discussion that will be on the board's agenda tonight with respect to the pause of winter sports and athletics. We do have one submission that I'll read to you from a resident. Reads, "We recently learned that our son's preschool program, the Early Learners Academy, will be closed as a result of the recent decision to move back to distance learning. Our contact at the program was not able to tell us if the program is likely to resume either this calendar year or this school year. This information is essential to allow parents to plan. Please provide public guidance ASAP to address this issue. This program was open most of the school year to date because it was designated as daycare versus preschool. While we understand the reason for this recent action, we also need to know if we need to seek alternate full-time care for our child to enable us to keep working. We also don't want to repeatedly switch our son's environment, which can be scary and stressful for a young child. Please make a concrete decision about the required threshold for reopening this year. For example, cases per 10,000 residents. Or if reopening is not likely to be a possibility, please state this directly and clearly to parents as soon as possible in a public communication so that everyone can do what they need to do in order to maintain childcare and income." With that, madam, I turn it back to you and the board.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. And once again, you know, the ones that we are unable to read during our meeting, we will make sure that, we always make sure that we read them before the meeting. Okay, thank you. So now I would like to move approval of the Part A of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Bebe. Any questions or comments about that part of the agenda? None? Okay, so let's vote. All those in favor of approving Part A of agenda, please say aye. Director Bebe?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorm?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Steiger?
Aye.
And Corman, aye. So the part has been approved. Now we move into our Part B of the agenda. Just make sure that I have the right one. Yep. For Part A, the first item that we have today is the State of Minnesota Emergency Contract, acting through its Commissioner of the Department of Health for the use of Ridgeview Elementary School as a COVID-19 testing site. And I would like- Yes?
I'll, I'll read it for you.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, go ahead.
All right. "Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the emergency contract between the state and Minnesota, acting through its Commissioner of the Department of Health and Independent School District 271 to provide a free community-based testing site for medical professionals to provide COVID-19 specimen collection services. The contract is effective November 22nd, 2020 through December 30th, 2020."
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I think it was Director Olson, right? Okay. So now I'd like to call upon Mr. Jake Winchell, Executive Director of Community Education.
Good evening, Director Corman, members of the board, and Superintendent Fujitaki. As Director Steiger mentioned, this is a resolution to allow for the Department of Health to use Ridgeview Elementary School as a COVID-19 test site starting today, November 23rd, and run through the month of December. Testing will be available for six hours on all non-school holidays. They'll be on-site for eight hours, but testing available for six. Lastly, all legal and insurance have both reviewed the contract.
Any questions or comments? Doesn't look like, so, oh, yes, Director Bebe, go ahead.
I want to thank those that have made this arrangement because there is a greater need for testing. And I just traveled, and I will be going over to Ridgeview tomorrow to get a test. And I was looking around for opportunities, and because our facility opened up, I was able to get tested this week. Otherwise, you have to wait until after Thanksgiving. So I really thank you, and I'm grateful to be part of a district that is really seeking to reach out to the community.
Thank you, Director Bebe. Any other comments? Okay, so it looks like we're ready to vote. So all those in favor of this resolution, please say aye. Director Bebe?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorm?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Steiger?
Aye.
And Corman, aye. So the state emergency contract has been approved. Thank you. Okay, next. What do we have next? We have donations. If someone liked to read it. Director Olson?
"Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 accepts donations, as indicated in the background, in the amount of $10,000."
Thank you. Is there a second?
Bebe?
Thank you, Director Bebe. Okay, so I'd like to call Mr. Rat Sikovic, Executive Director of Finance and Support Services.
Chair Corman, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. This is a monthly resolution that we do for donations that are donated to the district for board approval. The majority of these, the $10,000, was, were donations to the two high schools for student support, and then also a donation to the food service program. After this, the, the board meeting, there'll be a scrolling information of all the people that did donate.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? No? Looks like we're ready then. All those in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye. Director Bebe?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorm?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Steiger?
Aye.
And Corman, aye. This has been approved. Thank you. The next item in our agenda is the school calendar 2021-2022. Someone like to read? Director Sorm?
Sure. "Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the calendar for the 2021-2022 school year."
Is there a second?
Second, Steiger.
Thank you. Okay, so, Dr. Jenna Mitchler, Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening, Chair Corman, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the board viewing public. Yeah, so I'll talk to you a little bit, I think, first about the process with our calendars. So we have a calendar committee that's a representative group of lots of stakeholders in our district. So we have a representative from our parent group, we have representatives from each of the teachers from the three levels of elementary, middle, and high school. We have a transportation representative, someone from the Office of Educational Equity. Our VFT, Union President, usually is represented at those meetings, among a couple of others. We also have a school board representative who sits on this committee, and that's Director Starks. And the way this committee functions is they typically meet a couple of times throughout the year, and they develop a draft calendar. That draft calendar then goes to administration and cabinet, and then cabinet and administration bring the final draft to the board for review and for approval. So with regard to the 21-22 calendar, I'll just say that typically the calendar committee, they're very strong advocates for getting schools started as soon as we can, because we know engagement for students is, is, is higher in the beginning of the year than it is in, say, the second week in June. The interesting thing about the 21-22 school year is that we're, as you might, might remember, we're approaching the start of a school year that may be similar to the start of this past school year. So we're anticipating and hoping that COVID will have subsided, and if that's the case, we'd love for families to be able to have the opportunity to go to the state fair and for us to start after Labor Day. But if COVID has not totally subsided, and we haven't rolled out the vaccines, or we haven't seen progress on the, the virus as much as we would like, we may be facing an atypical start to the school year again, like we did this last year. If you might remember, this last school year, we had planned to start before Labor Day, and then we adjusted to an after-Labor Day start so that we'd be in alignment with other districts in our area. This allowed us to collaborate with the other districts, do some learning, and really allow staff extra time to prepare for the school year. So all of that to say, the calendar committee was a little divided on this calendar, because of course, like I said, we would love to get started sooner than later. But recognizing just the unusual start to this, this next year, the potential for an unusual start to this next year, we wanted to propose here an after-Labor Day start. So that's what you see with the 21-22 calendar, the start date on the 7th. You'll also notice in the draft that there's two assessment days, so on the 1st of September, and also the 7th of September. And then you'll notice too, you have the typical, we have the typical breaks broken in. We have at the end of the school year, a three-day week, which allows for, at the secondary level, a review day, and then two days worth of finals. And I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has about that calendar.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchler. Questions? Director Olson?
I am just curious. I happened to hear on the radio that Minneapolis was not going to plan any snow days into their calendars, because now that students and teachers are prepared for distance learning, if there were to be a blizzard of some kind, that they could automatically go to distance learning. So I'm curious if that was discussed when this calendar was discussed.
Yeah, Director Olson, that's a, a good question. So that's not typically something that's part of what the calendar committee discusses, but it's definitely related to calendar, right? So what I can say is that the latest executive order, one of the last couple of executive, executive orders that's come from the governor, has stated that if a district is in either the hybrid learning model or the distance learning model, they can choose to use a remote learning day or a distance learning day for all students, instead of having a, a snow day where students would, would have off-school completely. Hard to say how that will shift and change things in the years to come, but for now, it does allow us to use a, a remote learning day instead of taking the entire day off.
Thank you.
Director Sorm, do you have a question? You had your hand out.
Yes. Total days for 168, does that change a dollar, or is that still the state mandated number of days for our students?
Yeah, Director Sorm, so there's different numbers of mandated days by state statute per level, and at some levels, it's actually by hours. And so in this case, I will say that we are sticking to the 168 days, which has been our past practice, and I believe is a part of some of our contracts. You bring up a good point, Director Sorm, something that I failed to point out, but you'll notice that we have been able to keep the trimesters fairly consistent in terms of the numbers, front loadings, that we still do have 57 days in Try 1, 57 in Try 2, and 54 in Try 3.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Bebe?
I know this is a very Herculean task, as I've talked with others, and so I want to thank those that have been part of this committee and have worked together. And even as there's been division maybe on some things, that you've worked very hard. So I want to be grateful for that. And also, I had heard something about, you know, potential for maybe making up some time in the summer or not. I'm not sure if that may be a possibility this year, given what we may have lost, but I didn't see that on the calendar, so I'm assuming that if that happens, then our calendar would change.
Yeah, Director Bebe, so thank you for the, the gratitude. You're right, it's been a big task, and especially this year, I think, more than others, because we're just facing such an unusual, such unusual circumstances as we try to plan for the start of, especially this next upcoming school year. So there were a lot of changes throughout the year as we met as a calendar committee, so thanks for that. So we will still plan to have our summer school programming, our targeted services programming, which helps support students, especially students who've been struggling in the summer months. We'll have to, again, just kind of see how things develop with regard to COVID as we, as we move forward. But the intention would be to continue to have those programs for students so that we can provide that additional academic and social emotional support for students into the, into the summer, for those who need it.
Thank you. Director Bennett?
Yes, I kind of wanted to go back to what Director Olson was talking about with the remote days for, instead of snow emergency days. I'm recalling back in state statute, it says something that school boards can do their annual calendar, add up to five days for remote learning in lieu of emergency closures. And I just don't know, do we have to like declare that when we pass this, or is that be in the actual calendar? Because really, snow days, after we're past COVID, snow days really should be a thing of the past. I think we've all learned that we can do distance learning successfully, so I don't see next year, when we're back in school, the need to have any more snow days. So I don't know how we go about making sure we do that correctly. Do we have to negotiate that or something? Or do you have any, anything else you can speak about on that?
Yeah, I can, Director Bennett. So first I'll say that the inner child in me feels sort of sad that we might do away with snow days. That was something I looked forward to as a, as a youngster. But, so yeah, so for this year, it is, as I said, so that districts who are in hybrid or distance, they can use those, those days as remote learning days. There is also written into statute something called e-learning days, and you're right, it's up to five days that a district could use. There's a process that's written and in place for districts that want to move in this direction of having e-learning days for, for inclement weather. And the process states that the school boards would need to recognize that a district is taking that up before the start of that school year. So it's not something we would need to do right now. It would probably be something we do in the later summer, if, if the board wanted to examine that, that option. I also would say, you know, because things have been changing so much, it's hard to know right now if that will still be something that, if that process will still be in place next fall, or if there'll be something, something new, some new announcement, or some new process in place. But that decision doesn't need to be made here at this time.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that is something that probably would be nice to revisit, because I remember a couple of years ago, we had that really bad winter, and we had like four or five days, and then the governor, you know, made an executive decision where we could count snow days as in-person days. And I mean, some districts had like nine or 10 snow days that year, so it'd be nice to be able to have that opportunity to use distance learning instead of just not having school at all, or having to make up those days in June, because nobody wants to come to school, you know, June 15th. So it's a nice option to, to explore.
Thank you. Director Starks, would you like to say something, since you're the representative from the board?
Sure. So I've been on this committee before, I was the parent rep earlier, and now as the school board rep, the, it, the one thing that's consistent about this is that this is the craziest puzzle that I have ever tried to solve. And now that the high schools are on trimesters, the middle schools are now on quarters, and the elementaries on semesters, it adds a whole nother layer of a complexity. So what I really appreciate about Dr. Mitchler is her bringing us all together to have conversations and make sure that every voice is heard. And like she said, there was definitely a split on whether or not we should start before Labor Day or after. But I think it's, it's a really interesting process, and what we come up with is absolutely the best thing that we could come up with for what we have in front of us. So if you want, if you can notice, this is new now. We do have the trimester on here, and we also have the quarter dates on there, and I believe that's new for this year, so that those that are in the middle school area have those dates on their calendars as well.
Thank you. Thanks to the, to Dr. Mitchler and to the calendar committee for putting together this puzzle. Thanks for the work. Okay, so let's see. It seems like we're ready to vote now. There's no other questions? No? Okay, so all those in favor of approving our calendar for 2021-2022, please say aye. Director Bebe?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorm?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Steiger?
Aye.
And Corman, aye. So this calendar has been approved. And now we have the school calendar 2022-2023. Would like to read it, please. Director Bennett?
"Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the calendar for the 2022-2023 school year."
Is there a second?
Second, Starks.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. Mitchler, again.
You'll notice that this calendar looks quite similar to the calendar that we had originally drafted for this year, so it includes a before-Labor Day start. It also includes, you'll notice, a three-day week, a four-day week, and then a five-day week. And this is something that the calendar committee was particularly, I would say, excited about, the idea that we would gradually be getting into the school year, giving staff and students time to acclimate, get down new, get to know new routines, get to know each other with a three-day, four-day, five-day week as we start the school year. You'll notice, just as before, we have those early assessment days on August 24th and August 29th. And then when you look towards the end of the school year, just as I had mentioned with the last calendar, again, we have those three days at the end of the year. after Memorial Day here, but that allows for that one day of review at the high school level and then the two days for finals.
Questions? No comments? Director Bennett?
Yeah, I noticed in this calendar, there's there's no time off for the MEA. Is there a reason? I don't know if you can speak to that.
So on this calendar, August, I'm sorry, October 19th, you'll see would be the no school, high school professional development, elementary and middle school conference comp day. And then we would have off on the 20th and the 21st. So MEA would be on the 20th.
Sorry, it wasn't wasn't marked. So I didn't, I just thought those are school days.
Oh, right, sure. So anything that's in the the white that doesn't have a box around it would be a non-school day. With no professional development.
This computer here, it's just, there's no, it's just all black. I mean, it's just, it's all white for whatever reason. So I can't see that.
Yeah, those would be no, those would be non, non-instructional days.
Okay.
For for MEA. Yep.
Director Starks?
So I just want to say this has been a goal of this committee to have calendars two years out approved. And so yay, Calendar Committee for getting this this on together and ready and ready for proposals. So we can be two years out because we know families do appreciate having that information far enough in advance so that they can make plans as well. So I'm very excited that this happened this year.
Yeah, we got to put two puzzles together this year. Director Bibi? You have your hand up. Okay, I think we're ready, right? So all those in favor of approving the calendar for 2022 to 2023, please say aye. Director Bibi?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Steigaf?
Aye.
And Corman, aye. The calendar has been approved. Thank you. So next in our agenda, we have the Bloomington Anti-Racist Coalition Bark update. Superintendent Les, would you talk?
Thank you, Chair Corman, board members. This agenda topic is an update. The whole board action is expected by administration tonight. Six months back in June, about a month after the tragic killing of George Floyd, the Bloomington Anti-Racist Coalition, also known as BARK, approached our district with three demands. First, the need for a more inclusive curriculum. Second, end our school liaison officer program. And three, rename Jefferson High School. A month later in Ju- July, in the midst of dealing with the pandemic and social injustice issues, administration met with BARK because we value the voice of students. At that time of the first meeting, BARK's membership appeared to be comprised of current and former students. I'm glad our district team and I met with BARK. In fact, we have met seven times with BARK reps. The demands relate to valid concerns that need addressing. We've kept the board and our community informed about our engagement with BARK. Since July, our district now operates in an environment with so many vexing demands in addition to the three BARK demands. Our community wants normalcy. Our parents and staff want an end to the exhaustion and fatigue of working so hard. And our students want to want to be back in school. Since our last BARK briefing to the board and our community in August, administration has been focusing on starting schools and then moving instructional models. Administration is here tonight to provide the board with another BARK update. With respect to the BARK demands for an inclusive curriculum, you will hear tonight that we have and will continue to make our curriculum more inclusive. We met with BARK and informed them how we have improved our curriculum and invited BARK to be active participants in helping in our curriculum improvement work. With respect to the school liaison officer program, tonight, Bloomington Police Chief Jeff Potts will talk about a longstanding program and how it is different than other school district's school resource officer programs. Jefferson High School Principal Dr. Jason Anderson will share facts about our school liaison officer program. Please be assured, we recognize that our school liaison officer program now operates in a world that has significantly changed. Therefore, we need to study if and how our program should change to adapt to serve the needs in this new environment without compromising the safety of our students and staff. As your superintendent, I have and will continue to lead this study. As we study, we we need to be mindful not to react. We should respond with a well-thought-out plan that will ensure the continued safety of our students and staff. We're fortunate to have a new leader with us to help us with this study and work. Tonight, Kennedy High School Principal Akram Osman will share his thoughts about expectations and perceptions in this new environment. Because he's only been with us since July, he also needs to see our school liaison officer program in action with students in the building so he can formulate informed opinions and advice for us. Therefore, I respectfully need to give Principal Osman the gift of time. And we have the time to give because there are no students and officers in our buildings. Further, we can use this time to study the after effects in other districts that have ended their school resource officer programs. The challenge that those districts is that those districts' secondary schools continue in distance learning. Therefore, there are no students or officers in the schools to test the replacement safety systems. With respect to the third demand to change the name of Jefferson High School, our district doesn't have a process for renaming our buildings. I can understand and appreciate the call for this change. Our leadership choice is whether to invest our time and capacity to develop a process for a possible need change versus using our limited capacity to establish meaningful and sustainable systemic change. Please be sure that we are making systemic changes already. Systemic change also is most often successful is that it starts out at the top. Our two high school principals are leaders of color. Our chair is a leader of color. She has set a safe and supportive schools goal for our district. Now, each of our schools have a safe and supportive schools site goal. Everyone, our system is comprised of 10,000 students, 2,000 staff members, 80,000 residents. And we are a learning institution. To achieve sustainable systemic change on this scale, we need to educate. Our Safe and Supportive Schools Plan calls for educating our staff about cultural competency. Please look at me not as your superintendent, not as someone that has served our community for 25 years, but look at me as a person. You will see because of who I am, I value equity and will continue to fight racism. At the same time, as the leader of this district, I must keep us focused on the demands of getting our students back to school, what is safe to do so, and focusing on addressing our district financial challenges. Since we met with BARK in July, COVID is exponentially spreading. And the state deficit has grown to over $4.7 billion. I hope this explains why and how we are prioritizing our work and being respectful and responsive to the demands of BARK. Before I call upon our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning to share information about our inclusive curriculum work, does the board have any questions for me? Chair Corman?
Any questions for Superintendent?
If not, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, Andy Kubis, please take over.
Thank you, Superintendent Wudzowski. Chair Corman, school board members, viewing public. I also have with me our Director of Curriculum Instruction, Beth Flotmeyer. And so we wanted to give you an update tonight about the work that we have done with in partnership with the BARK group as it comes to inclusive curriculum. I thought our report tonight could be three parts, a recap history of meetings, the process, which mostly for our viewing public more than our board and our administrators, I'd like to remind people about the process of how standards and courses are designed and made. That's important context as we as we continue this conversation. And then talk about next steps. So as the superintendent referenced, we met with the BARK group near the end of June, early July. There were, I know both high school principals were there at that time. Carol Camper was there from Kennedy. Rachel Jens was our Director of Curriculum Instruction. And then there was a host of other administrators there as well as a good representation from the BARK group. I took, as that topic was primarily about curriculum and instruction and the inclusive curriculum, I took the position of being a good listener, as did others there. We heard firsthand from, as the superintendent referenced, current students and alumni who talked to us and testified about their experience in the Bloomington Public Schools. We got to hear about things that went well. We got to hear about things that didn't go very well, places where the district misstepped and places where we frankly didn't step at all. And as many times as I wanted to unmute my mic and ask questions and follow up, I thought the best thing to do in developing a partnership is that we should just be good listeners. And that's what we did. And so we got to hear three in essentially three different areas that the BARK group wanted to see significant change in curriculum instruction. The first was around ethnic, an ethnic studies class, looking at the different cultures that make up Bloomington and studying those those cultures that are inside the Bloomington culture. We, they wanted to talk about BIPOC authors and the lack of representation in the materials and the curriculum that we're using. And then they wanted to have a conversation and see changes in the way that we teach history and social studies so that it's just not in a Eurocentric way. And we heard that loud and clear at that first meeting. As a follow-up to that first meeting, Rachel Jens and I scheduled a second meeting that happened in the middle of July after the Fourth of July and vacations everyone was on. And we had a really, really good, a more intimate meeting with the representatives of BARK as we talked about those three, those three topics again, an ethnic studies class, BIPOC authors in history that just isn't taught in a Eurocentric way. I think there were learnings on both ends. We got to hear more detail about the students' experiences and the leadership components that they were bringing to the conversation. And if I could be as bold as to say, they got to hear about the things that we have been already doing in Bloomington to get at this work. And so I walked away from that conversation and the tone of the follow-up emails that that was a very successful meeting. We shared a little bit about process, we shared a little bit about policy, and we shared a little bit about how things work from a state level as it trickles to the local level. So along that first that first topic area, as we talk about an ethnic studies class, that was one of the first things that we talked about. And so as we talk about having an ethnic studies class for our students to understand about their own culture and see themselves, it's a topic that I've talked to you, the board, about before around Emily Stiles' work that influenced me when I was still in the classroom around windows and mirrors, that a student should look into the curriculum, look into the instruction that's happening, and they should see windows into other cultures. They should see windows in the people who don't look like them, who believe differently than they do. And they should be able to take all of that information as they're looking into those windows of the curriculum and begin discerning and adapting and figuring out who they are. But they should see other people in the curriculum. At the same time, there needs to be mirrors in the curriculum. Mirrors so that students can able to look at a curriculum, read a book, and see themselves as they're either as the author or whatever the pages are saying. Windows and mirrors are very, very important as we look at curriculum. The ethnic studies class is one of those things that we talked about where the students in Bloomington, that makeup of our student body, which is way, way different than it was 24 years ago when I started in Bloomington, students need to see themselves. They need to see themselves in the curriculum and understand about themselves. So we had a conversation about that class. What we shared with the BARK group is that we agreed that we could use a class like that in the Bloomington Public Schools. However, the current way that we start classes in Bloomington is a long and winding road. And so the way that that happens is right around this season as the as the year starts, we take submissions for classes, elective classes from high school teachers or departments. And so they submit those classes to our Curriculum and Instruction Department. Beth Flotmeyer runs that process. And so there are lots of different things for a class to come to fruition. We have to have someone who wants to teach the class. We also have to have standards embedded in that class. We can't teach empty classes. It has to have standards to it. So students are learning standards and they're making their way towards graduation. The third component is we have to have a teacher who has the correct license to teach that class. Mary Burrows, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that every year there's a STAR report we have to sign and send out. And then MDE looks very carefully about who's teaching what class and they, there are things that happen if you're teaching out of your license. The last thing that has to happen, if all three of those come to come into place, is you have to have students who sign up for that class in order for it to run. So there's lots of components to a class starting. What we talked about with the BARK group was that we were interested in starting that process around this class. So two things and very, very timely things. The first thing is we waited to see if somebody in the high schools or department had offered to want to teach an ethnic studies class. We don't, we did not receive any proposals from that. So we launched into phase two, which is we now then begin recruiting. Because this is an important topic and something that we agree upon, we are going out to ask our high school teachers who we know have an interest and a desire in in this field to ask them if they'd be interested in starting to design and look at offering an ethnic studies class. So that's how we left that conversation with BARK in July, that that's the steps that we'll be taking towards it. The second topic, as you, as I mentioned, was about our BIPOC authors. So again, we get to windows and mirrors again, where students should be seeing themselves in the books that they read and the speakers that they hear, and they should be seeing others as well. We've been working very hard traditionally at bringing more BIPOC authors into our curriculum and instruction and our materials before the BARK group came, but even doubling down since it's happened. At that July meeting, two things happened rather significantly. The BARK, the BARK group, sorry, furnished us with a really extensive list of BIPOC-authored books that we might consider as we go down the path of adopting new curriculum and instruction and materials for English Language Arts. In turn, we shared with them a list that we had also started and invited them to also participate. So it would be reciprocal that we would take their information and they would take ours. And then we also invited them to be part of the process. So let me pause there and just give you a quick, a quick standards lesson just for the public so they understand how these two tails weave together. About every seven years, the Minnesota Department of Education studies their standards to see if they need to be changed. And so let's take an example of science because it was recently changed. They they look at the standards and they ask themselves, do, has science changed enough that we need to look at these standards differently? And they compile a large group of constituents to do that work. Teachers, administrators, business people, parents, community members, they all come together to make that decision. It's a long process. And so once they do that work, and there are several times during that process where there's public open forum, where you can go and respond to the MDE and comment about whether you like these standards or what they're missing. And so that all happens on that, as I'll say, that happens at the head of the river, if you will. At the start of the Mississippi, all that work happens. And so as it trickles down, it makes its way through that process. Ultimately, it comes to the to the mouth of the Mississippi or school districts. At the school district, we receive the standards and it's our job at that point to prioritize those standards. We do that with the help of teachers. We do that with the help of our DDAC, our District Diversity Advisory Council, our PAC Committee, which is our parent committee, with student feedback groups, with our American Indian Parent Group. So we we look at those standards and we look at those materials and we make sure that we are representing who our student population and our families are in the Bloomington Public Schools. From the time that something is reviewed at the state until we put it into practice can be four or five years. And so serendipitously, as they offered their, the BARK group offered their list of BIPOC authors, we happened to be starting that process with the English Language Arts Standards this year. And we shared the dates that we'll be working on those standards with the BIPOC, I mean, sorry, with the BARK group. And we invited them to participate. We invited them to come alongside us in certain times and give us recommendations and feedback about how we're doing on the process. And we promised that we would bring their materials and their thoughts into that group to make sure that they are being heard as well. As the superintendent said, student voice is really, really important to us. And so hearing that and making sure we put that into place is is an important piece. I will say, as a little bit of editorial for your for your price of admission here, if if you're looking to make a change on these standards, because that's really where things change, when the MDE starts these, the standards work, if we're looking for things to be taught differently, regardless of the of the discipline, that's where I think the most work can be done, going to Going to the Minnesota Department of Education in those open forums, being part of those committees, and telling the MDE what you think should be happening in the schools. Because once it leaves the MDE, it becomes law. Chief Potts is here, almost like a traffic law. We don't get to change what it means to be, to stop at a red light. That's already been decided. But there are ways that we can make changes at the mouth of the Mississippi as opposed to the foot of the Mississippi. Now, we still will make significant changes and we're committed to make those changes. But that was the conversation we had around BIPOC authors. We're committed to do this work. Another thing that comes to mind for me, as you think about that seven-year stretch, there's a lot that happens in the middle of that. And so we also are committed to providing supplemental district-sponsored material during that time. Because we know that the world doesn't stop for seven years, that things are flexing and that we need to respond to that. So just as an example, we had the Circle Grant with our title schools. We had some funding there that was allotted for materials. We worked with those principals and the teachers, our district instructional committee, our DDAC, and we furnished those schools with books and literature written by BIPOC authors, written by authors who look like our kids. And so we just don't do it episodically. We try to make sure that we're doing that as we can, as things go forward. And so we appreciated the list that was furnished to us, and again, we invited the BART group to come alongside us during this process. And I will say the process by the MDE has been extended by a year, but it doesn't stop the importance of the work because it's important work and it's important that we do this work. The third topic, if you recall, is that we're talking about history and social studies that just isn't taught in a Eurocentric way. And the two terms that come to mind when I think about that are two things. One, absent narratives, and two, primary source documents. And so let me explain those two pieces to you just a little bit. So as I talked about, right now, we're looking at English Language Arts and designing that, those priority standards at the local level, at our school level. This year, the MDE is beginning to study their social studies standards. So this is the time to go to the MDE and advocate for what you want changed in social studies. As a public citizen, that is your right and quite frankly, your duty if that's what you want changed. Knowing that, we can't wait for the MDE to do that. So we are getting ready to make sure that we are teaching history from not just a single narrative, but absent narratives and primary source documents. As an example to our commitment to that, and we shared this with the BART group when we met in July, we've had lots of PD around those things. And so just most recently, in our latest PD session, we had the Minnesota Human Rights, I'm sorry, Humanity Center come. They talked and provided a session on engaging students with Dakota and Ojibwe resources, mostly anchored in absent narratives. And so I shared the story, I won't bore you with the made-up story before about how an absent narrative happens. I shared, if you recall, about it was a grass-cutting story, where I got to control the story when my son wouldn't cut the grass, but he had a version of that story as well. And his story didn't get told because I held the power. Lots of times in history, that's how things work. When I was a 12th grader, as I've shared before, Mr. Chisholm was my teacher. We heard history based on Mr. Chisholm. There was no such thing as another narrative. It's whatever Mr. Chisholm said. There was no internet. There was no way to go and check his sources. This is the way it happened. That's different now. Students have so much at their fingertips. Just as a check-in before I presented this, this morning I went and just quickly Googled Boston Tea Party. In 1.09 seconds, I got 71,300,000 hits for Boston Tea Party on Google. When I was a kid, I got one hit. It was the textbook that was given to me. And so we need to make sure that we're incorporating and teaching our students about how to discern 71,300,000 sources and to look at all the narratives, not just the ones that have been taught traditionally. We're not trying to tell kids what to think. We're trying to introduce them to different perspectives and let them think on their own. Build that capacity. We do it as adults all the time. Whether we're buying something at the store, we make a judgment based on the information that we have been shown, that we've read about, or that we've seen. And we need to teach students the same thing. And so when we're talking about teaching history and not just a Eurocentric way, what we shared with the BART group is we are compelled to do that through absent narratives and primary source documents. Primary source documents written by the people who are actually, in my example, at the Boston Tea Party, who might have a different perspective than the way I might have learned it. Not that theirs is right and somebody else's is wrong, but the ability to take both those perspectives and have a citizenry and a populace who can discern and make their own decisions. That's what we should be doing for kids through windows and mirrors. And so those are the three areas that we talked about. I gave you next steps again from the ethnic studies standpoint. We plan to go solicit teachers now to help us get this up, ready to go. As far as a class, we hope that we can find someone who will want to teach that class. From the BIPOC authorship, we've invited the BART group along and reached out to them several times to say, you are our partners, here's the process, and here are the windows that you'll be able to help us out. Come alongside us and offer recommendations and suggestions. And then again, knowing that social studies is just being studied now, petitioning to people that if you want changes, please go get those changes. But in the meantime, we've got a great social studies cadre of teachers here in Bloomington who are bringing absent narratives and who are bringing primary source documents to their work. But we want to be able to help them more with that by bringing them training. So we're excited about our partnership. We're excited about the work that they're doing. I'll finish by saying, while we, we think it's important that we hear from people who went to the Bloomington Public Schools to tell us about their experience, it's equally as important for us to hear from the students who are in school now. And so I've petitioned to both of our high school principals that we want to come talk to their students about their experience, their curricular experience, their instruction experience, their learning experience. We want to make sure that we go to our leadership group that gets run out of our Office of Educational Equity. We want to make sure that we get in front of the BSAT group, that we empower our student representatives on the school board to have voice in this work that we're doing. It's important work, and experience is really important because the world happens so quickly. So we're committed to continue our work with BART. Again, as you could probably tell by the excitement in my voice, I love the partnership because I think it's the right work. And so it's good to hear from people to say, yes, you're doing the work, but you could do this a little better. That's okay to hear once in a while, too. So that's my update report on the inclusive curriculum part. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Fujitaki for the next report.
Yeah, thank you, Executive Director Kubus and Director Flotmeyer for your updates and your openness and commitment to make our curriculum more inclusive. Before we move on, are there any questions for Executive Director Kubus or Director Flotmeyer from the board? Chair Corman?
Yeah, thank you. Any questions or comments so far? Yes, Director Bennett?
Yeah, more of a comment. Just want to thank you, Mr. Kubus, for that wonderful presentation. I don't think I could ask a question because it was so thorough. I'm also looking forward to the potential of the ethnic studies class. I know that's something my daughter would love to take, so hopefully we have something up and running in two or three years so she can, by the time she gets to high school, so she can take that class. But thanks.
Thank you, Director Bennett. You know, I'm merely a representative. We've got a department and administration who believes in this work. And then more importantly, we've got a teaching staff who believes in this work. So thank you. On their behalf, I say thank you.
Thanks. Director Olson?
I just wanted to say, yes, thank you. That was beautiful. And also that over the years, as I've been substitute teaching, I have noticed a wider array of diverse books in the classroom. It has been very clear to me that we're developing quite a selection. And also, I had to grab this book that I'm reading, Reading Sweet Grass, by a Native American woman, because I'm reading that right now, and it is a book that, one of the openings was, breathe in the sweet grass and you start to remember things you didn't know you'd forgotten. And right away, I started to feel that I was, you know, entering a different culture. And so I agree that that's an important thing to do.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Kubus. And Superintendent Fujitaki, you did mention this. I'm not sure, but I also was part of the, I think, I believe it was the first meeting that happened with leaders of BART right at the very beginning. And one thing that I wanted to mention on what Mr. Kubus had said about the social studies review, this one only happens every 10 years, correct? And as I was remembering about this year's task force for the, for the review for the Minnesota Department of Education, there is a committee that was put together, and there was, there was a process, a selection process where different leaders were able to apply for that, to be part of that committee to review the social studies curriculum. And as I'm looking at it now, because I was looking for that information, it says, the report says that 50% of that committee self-identify as American Indian or Alaska Native. 7% are Asian, 24% are Black or African-American, 10% are Hispanic or Latino, and then the rest of them are white Caucasian. So, and with 5% of them identifying as two or more races. So this is another, you know, as you were making comments about this, you were speaking about that, I was remembering about this committee. And once again, you know, there's so many things that we need to look into, directly into what Minnesota Department of Education is doing, the work that they're doing. One question, comment that I have for you, and especially at the secondary level is, you know, as you look into classes like the ethnic studies, have you also considered or would you possibly be considering the possibility of having a heritage class? And I ask this from my Spanish teacher perspective, because I know that we have a very heavy number of Latino students or who are, who come from Latino families that usually take our classes, our language classes, and end up being on levels, still at the secondary level, on levels two, and levels three, and levels four. But they are very ready to jump into a higher level that addresses directly their culture. So I just wanted to bring that up for your consideration as well.
Thank you for that, Director Corman. I know that we've talked about heritage classes in the past. I won't, I won't put our principals on the spot, but that is a reminder to us to look at that again. But I know we've discussed it in the past, and so unless Dr. Anderson or Akram or Beth Flotmeyer has any more commentary on that, thank you for that. Thank you for that prompt.
Yeah, and if you, you know, ever want to talk about it, feel free to reach out. Another one that I have a comment about is the AP, when it comes to AP languages. That's another very good one. I know that we offer the test, but we don't offer the class itself. And it's just another one that provides a great opportunity for all students, not only students of color, to really get to know more about other cultures and understanding their history and their social, political challenges through the years. So yeah, that's another, just another one.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. And please continue.
I'm finished with my report. Superintendent Fujitaki?
Great, thank you. The next BART demand is to end our school liaison officer program. Over the years, our school liaison officer program has done a commendable job keeping our students and staff safe and secure. Here to share his perspective, or the Bloomington Police Department's perspective, on our school liaison officer program is our city's Chief of Police, Jeff Potts. Chief Potts, the microphone is yours.
Thank you, Superintendent Fujitaki. Madam Chair, school board members here tonight. I'm just here to talk a little bit about the program that we have been running for several years. I want to make it clear in the very beginning that we call it a school liaison officer program. I'll talk about the differences between a school liaison officer and a school resource officer here in a few minutes. And so as I mentioned, this program's been in place for more than 20 years. It has evolved over time. The program currently, as it stands right now, has a police detective, a sworn officer within the Bloomington Police Department, within our investigative division, in a part-time capacity assigned to each of the 10 elementary schools and the three middle schools. So at each elementary, they have a liaison officer that they can call and ask questions if there is an emergency or critical emergency. In all likelihood, the elementary schools and the middle schools would have a patrol response, but they do have a relationship with, on a part-time basis, an investigator who works within the police department and can respond as needed, but is more in a part-time capacity. That's different than how we handle the high schools. At both Kennedy and Jefferson, we have a full-time detective assigned to each school. So those are experienced sworn officers. They are selected in a specialty assignment kind of criteria where it oftentimes generates a lot of interest. So we get really high-quality, high-caliber experienced officers. Again, they're assigned from our investigative division. The liaison that is selected, after being selected, will receive specialized training in how to work within a school environment, making sure that they are well-trained on the latest in our state statutes and really how the school liaison program is run. These officers that are assigned to the high schools, so we're talking about Kennedy and Jefferson, these officers do not wear the standard uniform like I'm wearing tonight. They are in plain clothes, or oftentimes they're wearing logoed attire from the high school. So our Jefferson liaison officer will be wearing Jaguar attire, and the Kennedy will be wearing Eagle attire, some kind of school logoed attire. The liaison officers are there to really primarily do these things, the things I'm going to list here for you right now. They're there to be a liaison, a resource to the students, the staff, and the parents of the students on issues involving the students. They're there to build positive relationships with the students and staff. In fact, over the years, we have, because of the work of the school liaison officer, we have recruited students to become police explorers or become community service officers and eventually police officers. This just speaks to really how they can build positive relationships with the students within the schools. A very important component to our school liaison program is that they're there and able to provide a quick response to an emergency or crisis that may occur within the school. They're also able to transmit on their radios, transmit a request for additional patrol officers to come in and help handle a situation. Now, this might be a medical emergency involving a student or staff. This may be a crisis situation, it may be a fight. They may, the school may be going into a lockdown for a specific crisis or threat. And the school liaison is there to help deal with whatever that threat is. We expect that those liaison officers will immediately try to address whatever threat is within the school. But also, because they're on-site, they have the ability to get on their radio and request assistance from other officers who are on patrol within the city. And unfortunately, we saw this last year on November 5th, that Jefferson High School, where unfortunately we had a situation involving a student with a knife. And fortunately, our school liaison was on-site. And along with student, or along with staff, they were able to quickly intervene. But also, our school liaison officer was able to get on the radio and get additional police resources there very quickly. They are also able to conduct follow-up investigative work on crimes that have occurred within the school or on cases that involve students that are at the school. The liaison also has the ability now to liaison with our Bloomington Police Department-embedded social worker program. And this is a new program that we're very, very happy to talk about here tonight. Now, we think there was a gap in some areas of the service that we were providing to our community and that people who are in need of the social worker resource, the resources that the social worker has at their, on their menu of options, that students and even adults within our community would take too long for the Hennepin County, the traditional process, to get those services to the folks who are in need of them. And so now we have an embedded social worker here and actually going to be adding a second very soon that can help close the gap. And so how it plays into the school liaison program is the school liaison has the ability to query and find out if there, what situations happened out of the school or overnight, maybe after school hours. And if there are situations that involve a student that happen off-school property or outside of school hours, that school liaison is is able to connect the student or family with our, or our social worker resources. And, and that's a new, that's a new capability that we haven't had in the past. And we're finding it to have, be very helpful in certain situations that, that have occurred here within the first 10 months of this year. Here's some things that they don't do, that, that these are not part of our school liaison program, that they aren't there to perform proactive enforcement details. They're not there, again, in a police, the standard police uniform. And so unlike many school resource officer programs, this is the differentiation, that those school resource officers are in, in police uniforms and are there to do enforcement details or have enforcement contacts with students within the school and try to almost serve the, the role of a school disciplinarian. That's not what a school liaison program is all about. In fact, in our case here in Bloomington in 2019, and, and this is very similar in years before that, that nearly every case that our school liaison officer became involved with in terms of an enforcement encounter, that school liaison was called to the incident by a school staff member or a family member of a student. And so that, that just kind of illustrates the point that they're not there doing random enforcement details or proactive enforcement patrols within the school. Again, our, our program differs from the traditional school resource officer programs. In most cases, those programs involve uniform officers that take more, take a more proactive enforcement role within the schools. Again, I just want to emphasize that's not the program that we have had here in Bloomington for, for more than the past 20 years, probably close to 30. So that is kind of a quick overview of the school liaison officer program here in Bloomington. I think next I am going to turn it over to Dr. Anderson as the principal of Jefferson, who has seen kind of firsthand how the program operates to add his comments about our program.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board, members of you in public. My name is Jason Anderson, and I've served at Jefferson for going on five years now at this amazing school and community. And I, I guess I can't echo too much more to the details because Chief Potts did a very good job explaining. I guess all I can say is that what he described is very, very accurate. I, I would like to add a few pieces to this. Prior to Jefferson, I have worked in previous, I have worked in different schools throughout the metro area and I can, and I've also as principal have colleagues at other high schools around the metro, and I can confirm that how Bloomington uses its liaison program is, is generally different. At many other schools that I've either worked at or visited, you'll have uniformed officers. They will be there at the entrance of the school. They will be in full uniform throughout most days. They will have a marked squad car up front in the school. And again, our officers, unmarked car in the, in the parking lot. And generally Detective Aaron Paul is wearing a shirt and tie. So yes, that, that visibility piece. And I think the word liaison is just the best encapsulation. They are not in our halls or in our lunchroom doing proactive investigations or, or searching kids, but they are there for when we call upon them. They do a lot of work connecting with the school and the community and the students' families. They are an ability to support the kids from a more holistic picture. And I would say the other, you know, major use, so we use our officer for that, Chief Potts, and I know we, you know, big events, you know, there, we're thankful there, that we are thankful that they are there. Those are rare, thankfully. But we do have many students who are medically fragile, staff are medically fragile. And our Detective Paul is always on scene to assist with that medical support and is able to get medical teams to school much quicker than we could via 911. And so that is probably the most common use when it comes to crises that Detective Paul assists us with. So I can concur with the description that, that Chief Potts laid out. I can concur that nearly every incident in which the officer is involved with a student is based on our asking them to be. And so that is, I, I, that is my, that is my view and assessment of the program at Jefferson High School. I'm now going to pass the camera, the microphone to my friend and colleague, Akram Osman.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Superintendent Fujitaki, Madam Chair, Corman and School Board members. Just sharing my perspective about the work so far at Kennedy High School. As you all know, as the superintendent has already shared, started on July 1st as the new principal of Kennedy High School. Been in many meetings with students, staff, families. And many people have picked up already two words that I continue to go back to. And those two words are equity and humanity. Equity and humanity are the vision of Kennedy High School. Our goal is to create a school environment that is is super grounded on ensuring that students have a sense of value, a sense of belonging. And so that they're successful in their learning environment. That this doesn't happen without intentionality and really listening to people and planning based on the learning that happens. So I've been spending a lot of time with the support of the, our administration team learning this school year and asking questions. In regard to this specific topic, you know, I continue to, to listen. I think there are different, different perspectives that surface when we, when I listen to student voices and parent voices when it comes to police officers. And my role as this educational leader, I've got to take into account all the multiple perspectives and work through that with the lens of equity and humanity. How does it mean? Who is it, who is it benefiting and who is it not benefiting? And if it's not benefiting any of our students, then listed reasons why. The biggest thing that I'd like to also highlight is, you know, the safety of all of our students is the number one priority. Whatever that looks like, that's really up to us education leaders to figure out in order to achieve the vision of creating an environment that, you know, will create that sense of value and belonging. Safety is also a piece of it. So I continue to learn. I continue to meet with students. I've got several meetings coming up after break as well to hear these perspectives. One thing is seeing in action. I've been in schools long enough. I've been a student in an American system. And I've seen, you know, and I've heard and I've experienced as a person. But now it's also my job as a building leader is to listen to people's experiences and to work alongside and partnership in anything that's going to lead to more equity and humanity. And if it's inequitable and challenging, then, then we've got opportunities to reflect and ask questions in order for our students to truly achieve and learn in environments that are going to be built on that. So anything that causes harms, harm towards students, towards families, needs to be addressed. And that's what I'm committed to as a leader of Kennedy High School.
Thank you.
Are you done?
Yep.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Chief Potts, Jefferson High School Principal Dr. Anderson and Kennedy High School Principal Osman. I want to recognize Principal Osman for agreeing to work with me on this study and work with, with me on examining this program and see how we can adapt it to this new environment we have, at the same time, keeping our students and staff safe. I want to take this opportunity to recognize that in 2016, the Bloomington Police Chief Jeff Potts collaborated with the St. Louis Park Police Chief to establish and lead a program called Pathways to Policing. The goal of this first of its kind program is to diversify their police forces. Subsequently, four other Minnesota City Police Departments joined this program. So I commend Chief Potts for taking the lead on this initiative. I want to also share that one of Bark's initial reactions was to request student arrest and citation information from the Bloomington Police Department. I believe Bark wanted to examine if students of color were being disproportionately arrested and cited. Bloomington Police Department provided Bark with the requested information. Bark and the BPD had meetings to understand and interpret the data. Subsequently, our district was engaged by both Bloomington Police Department and Bark to review and comment on the data. In response, our district administration had conversation with Bark and with BPD about the data provided. Our work shifted to drilling deeper into the data to get a better understanding. Because, and we engaged our principals to look at this data, we, J. Rick Kaufman and others. And we, we're still doing the drilling. There's more work to be done to have a better understanding. But there are some good news. The total number of arrests and citations over the past three years calendars have progressively reduced. So in other words, fewer and fewer of our students are being arrested and cited. In fact, it's 50% less 2017 compared to 2019. Not going to go into a lot of detail. We're still drilling down into the data to better understand the information. And I'll be, be coming back to the board with additional information to share with the board. Now that concludes our update, Chair Corman. And we are ready for any additional questions, the board or comments the board may have. Chair Corman?
Thank you. Thanks to all presenters and thank you, Chief Potts, for being with us tonight. Any questions or comments, board members? Director Sorum?
Yes, let me start it out by saying, I think I've been around on the school board as long as we've had liaison officers. And I remember talking to our former chief of police before, when, when we were discussing this. And it's always been a case that from my perspective, that the administration and the staff are the primary disciplinarians or sources, resources in taking care of the problems with our counselors and teachers. And the liaison officer is an additional resource, just with all the expertise that the chief had pointed out. And by being just an additional resource person, when they have, all have to go down to the lunchroom just to kind of monitor activities and so forth, they don't have to be down there so much anymore because our lunchrooms are so modernized and student-friendly. But they're still always available. And so with the staff and the counselors, teachers, everybody else wandering through the buildings, taking care of whatever might be little aggravations or whatever it is, the liaison officer is just another person there. He's not the primary disciplinarian. He or she might, isn't the disciplinarian. And I'm sure Director Starks could add something to it because she and my daughters and my children went to Kennedy High School at the time. And asking them, you know, and even I have a student, two students at Jefferson now. Of course, in, like you say, in distance learning, there aren't too many kids in the school to have, to have any kind of activity. But they have always said, hey, doesn't bother me if you're doing what you're supposed to be doing, you know, then, you know, you just go to your classes, you do what you have to do and everything is okay. There's just another person in there to, to see. So, you know, I'm in favor of this and the way it's been set up is just, I think, an additional safeguard for whatever happens. So I'm fully in favor of maintaining it. Amen.
Thank you. And just a reminder for everyone, we're not going into any type of action tonight. We're receiving an update just for the rest of the board members as we continue to ask questions. Any other questions in relation to the, to this update? Director Bennett?
Yes, first of all, thank you, Chief Potts, for joining us. It's been a while since we've had you in one of our meetings. So welcome back. My question I have for you is, do you have any idea what the retention rate of our liaison officers are? They, is it kind of like a one-year term or do we have officers that are staying there year after year?
Madam Chair, Director Bennett, I, I would say that it's probably in that four to five-year range. It's usually not one year and then they move on. But it's also not something, there has been, you know, rare occasion where someone would spend 10 or 12 years. But in most cases, it's four or five and they either get promoted or they rotate into a different position within the investigative division.
Okay, thank you. I asked that question because I think it's important that we have people that have been doing it year after year. I think a lot of districts that do the, the SRO program, it's pretty much a patrolman. It's usually the person with the least amount of experience and they're there for like a year. And then the next year, it's whoever gets suffered into it again, whereas we're actually having detectives that are doing it year after year, building those relationships with staff. And other than that, something else that sets us apart from what other districts are doing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Let's see, any? I just have one quick question. So this time is different because of course we are going through this pandemic. So things have been different for our students. How has that impacted the work that the liaisons are doing in our schools? How's it been different for them to have, they have to do maybe something different? Or do we adapt the, the kind of work that they're doing currently in our schools? Obviously, we don't have, you know, the, the two schools, but we also have certain supports in place. So I just wanted, I'm just curious to know a little bit more what, what's happening right now this year.
Sure, Madam Chair, the liaisons continue to work on the investigative work involving the students from the schools. Because the, because of distance learning, of course, they're not inside the school interacting with the students as much. And we are, as a department, we're still trying to figure out ways to do what we call community engagement work, where we can start, we can find opportunities to meet with people within the community to build those positive relationships. That's obviously been a big hurdle within the schools while we're in this pandemic. But they continue to work on and keep close relationships with the staff. They work on the cases that, that come to us where crimes have been occurred or been committed and they have to work on the investigative side of that. They're looking for ways to be more involved and engaged with the students. They had attended some of the sporting events, not very many, and now that program will be paused for a little bit here. But they're still trying to keep busy with their casework. They, their supervisors do continue to give them cases and primarily the liaisons work on cases that involve the students from within the school that they're assigned to. But there's not, there's definitely not as much student interaction during the distance learning mode here. They're more involved in their investigative work.
Thank you. And the other question I have is in relation to training. I know that there is a type of required training that the liaisons would have before coming into school. But what about during the school year and also especially during this time with all the the, the difficulties that, you know, the, the difficult things that have happened during this year? Is there any type of required additional training that they have had to go through considering the fact that they'll be in our schools?
Madam Chair, they, they have, as you mentioned, that when they're assigned to this position, they go through a school liaison training program. We also do some training within the investigative unit. So there's other experienced school liaisons that are within the investigative unit that they can learn from. While we've been working in the pandemic, we have had to do all of our training in the police department, kind of in an online mode. And so we have, I think we have about 25 online modules that all of our staff have to complete here before the end of the year. So they have continued to do training. In fact, not only are we requiring the, the kind of the standard 25 online modules, we're also doing an additional eight hours specific to issues that have come up during the pandemic and how we're inter, interacting with our communities during this pandemic. Focusing in not just the pandemic, but since the death of George Floyd, where we're training our officers on implicit bias and other kind of, you know, unfortunately, the thing is it has to be done online. I think we would obviously prefer that in person, but we have increased our training considerably from where we were last year in most particular areas.
Thank you, Chief Potts. And then I have one more question, and this is more for administration. And maybe this will be answered by Dr. Mitra. And maybe this will be answered by Dr. Mitchler. But I'm thinking about the safe and supportive schools plan that we have in place. And I'm just wondering if there had been so far any type of conversations within administration about how our liaisons will be included within this plan? Yes, Principal Asman? You have your microphone app.
One area that I'll share is our Officer Tracy has been invited and will continue to be invited in opportunities where we're doing some learning at the building level at Kennedy High School around culturally proficient schools, which connects directly to our safe and supportive schools goal within our student, within our site improvement plan. So that's an area that I thought would give us tools, like common language and set of, you know, just as for us to kind of examine our beliefs, values and assumptions and what do we know about our students? So those will be, she's not the only one involved, but and also involved our behavior specialist as well as other members of our school. So that's one way that I thought quickly could be a learning opportunity around culturally proficient schools.
Yeah, thanks for that, Principal Asman. I'll just add to that the strategy we're using to help train our leaders around culturally proficient schools, the framework and the tools that we have in place is a cohort model and a train the trainer model. And the idea would be that building leaders and their staff, especially a group of folks who are the sort of the equity leads in the building, would be fully trained and then train the rest of the staff that work with the building. And so that would include, you know, anyone who's working in the building from clerical folks who greet folks on the way in to perhaps the resource officers. So I think Principal Asman's a really great example of how that's playing out.
Thank you. Thank you. Very important information as we consider the fact that we're moving forward with a safe and supportive schools plan. And, you know, this is something that is expected to have everybody to be included, you know, from the very top. Every single person that has any type of interaction with our students. Because we are committed to this work and there's no options here. We're all working on it. So thank you for for addressing this as well. Okay, there's no other questions, correct, or comments? I think we can move into our next item. Then, thank you Superintendent Fujitaki. Thank you all presenters. We will continue our conversations about this topic for sure. Okay, thank you. Our next item then, it's the, and I think it's the last one, is the pause in winter sports and activities update. Superintendent, let's feedback.
Thank you, Chair Corman. This is another update. So no board action is expected by administration tonight. Just as a reminder, a memory refresher, on November 9th, our district put a pause on athletics and activities. The last day for athletic activities except for football and volleyball was November 20th, last week, Friday. At the beginning of January 2021, our board will take under advisement the status of this pause. That is the plan. However, last week, the governor came out with a new executive, emergency executive order 2099. That order stated that effective the last Friday, last week, Friday, November 20th, at midnight through December 18th, 2020, all school-related sports and activities would be paused. So the pause, the state's pause started at the same time as our pause. The governor's pause ends on December 18th. Because per state statutes, our governor's emergency executive order can only go up to 30 days. Therefore, if you count the days from November 20th, 30 days later, if it takes it to another Friday, that will be December 18th. So that's the longest he could put out the pause for the state. So it remains to be seen whether it's going to be ended there or it's going to be extended with another executive order beyond that. Therefore, the chair, vice chair and I met and we agreed that the board will use the December 14th board meeting to take an advisement if our district's pause on athletic activities should also end on eight on December 18th to be in alignment with the governor's current executive order. So we're going to study, take an advisement, we're going to ask Dr. Nick Kelly to come in, Hannah Hatcher, nursing supervisors to come in, we're going to look at, we're going to consult with the state, the MDE, the governor's office, the MDH for their guidance. And we'll bring that information to the December 14th board meeting for discussion and possible action by the board. Chair Corman, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, let's go with questions. Director Sorum?
Thank you. Superintendent, have we heard anything or anybody there? Have we heard anything from the Minnesota High School League? Whether or not they're actually pushing out the start of the seasons to pass the 18th? Or is everybody or all the youth sports and everything still in virtual coaching, so to speak? I suspect there's an awful lot of kids that are doing stuff on their own or whatever it is, if they can find any places to do it. But we're still kind of waiting for the high school league to make some kind of declaration or suggestion.
Thank you for that question, Director Sorum. I'll call up on Kennedy High School Activities Director John Anderson to respond. John, please.
Yeah, so the high school league last Friday, they delayed the start of all winter sports except for dance, which already started until no earlier than December 19th. That was the last information that we got from the Minnesota State High School League. I can't speculate on what they may do. They said they would be releasing a updated projected calendar for the winter and spring season. But it's only been a few days and we've not seen that calendar yet.
Director Starks?
So in that same line of of the Minnesota State High School League, Mr. Anderson, would you be willing also to share with us the changes that they have about virtual coaching as well?
So the seasons are not starting yet, so we are not in virtual coaching. They laid out specific guidelines about what coaches can and cannot do and what athletes can and cannot do during this time period. And we sent home that information to families after we got it. And we, I believe we emailed them to all 712 families throughout the district. So they're very specific about what is and is not allowed. I can read those for you if you would like.
I don't think that's necessary. I just wanted to, because in our last conversation, when we passed the resolution, you had talked to us about virtual coaching. So I just wanted to make sure that that was understood, that that has significantly changed since we passed our resolution.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Director Bennett?
Yes, and watching the the press conference last week of the governor, when he issued this executive order, he made it quite clear that school districts must still follow MDE's safe learning plan. And according to that safe learning plan, we can't return our kids back to sports until we can return our kids back to school, at least a hybrid level. And we can't do that until we are under 50 cases per 10,000 for two incubation cycles, which is four weeks. So that means for us to go back to sports, we would have to be under 50 right now and stay under 50 until December 18th. When right now, we're at 90 and increasing. So if he doesn't extend the executive order, if we're still following the safe learning plan, we still can't send our kids back to sports. Am I correct in that?
That's my understanding of the guidelines from the state. Yes.
So really, well, my concern is if we have a conversation about in December, knowing that there's no way we can return our kids back to sports, we're going to be sending, we might be sending a signal to our community that there might be some sports. I think it's just going to add more confusion to our community because they're going to want us to let kids play sports in December when we can't if we're following the safe learning plan.
At the same time, guidelines have changed in the past. The guidelines can change again from the state. They've been very fluid as far as.
Okay, so if the guidelines change, yes, and if they don't change, then our choice becomes either follow the executive order, follow the law, follow the direction or vote to violate all those.
I wouldn't use violate, use the term violate. Districts have interpreted the guidelines differently and they've taught, they've just been, yeah, they've interpreted the guidelines differently. And it, again, the guidelines have not been enforced. So when they're not enforced, that presents a real challenge. And when some districts choose to follow the guidelines and others don't, it presents another challenge for us. And we follow the guidelines and we follow what the directions come from the state as, yes. And we get, we see clarification from the state what those guidelines mean.
Okay, I don't know if there's any way we can get more clarification for that if we're forced into that decision? Where, okay, what's what's going to happen if we violate this? Because I'm also fearful of, well, what happens if we violate the executive order and go against Bloomington Public Health and go against MDH and MDE? And we have sports and we let kids in school and then someone gets sick or worse? And then are we setting ourselves for a legal liability situation? Because we're allowing for sports when we've been directed not to.
Right.
So I don't know if we can get clarification on that would be, would make our our decision process a little easier.
Okay, we'll we'll attempt to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then we'll have that that more about with this kind of information when we come back together in December. Right? Good. Director Sorum, I think you have a question.
Sure, just for additional clarification on that one. Director Bennett says it's up to 90. Who whose is that? Bloomington's, the counties or whatever that is? And then, you know, I suppose we're going to have that, you know, explained to us for next next month when Nick Kelly comes in with the presentations that way. Because if some districts in Hennepin County, school districts in Hennepin County are using their own statistics, then of course it would vary from 40 to 90 or whatever it might be. And then they would make plans accordingly. I don't know, John Anderson, have you heard any from some of the other districts about what their plans are? Are they just playing the waiting game also?
So ever since the governor made his announcement and the high school league made their announcements, everyone is just in a complete waiting game. You know, prior to that, you know, we had a mix of districts doing different things, some allowing practices, some, you know, continuing on with sports, others in shutting them down much like us in the metro and in outstate Minnesota. But ever since the governor did what he did last Wednesday and the high school league did what they did on Friday, they have really, no one's really talking about what they're doing. We're all just sort of waiting to see what happens in the next few weeks.
That includes all youth sports, including the little, little skaters and the little basketball players also.
Yeah, all all sports, adult, high school, youth, everyone has been shut down. I believe the only ones who are competing are the now are the professionals and the University of Minnesota. And not being very successful, I might say.
Right, right.
Director Bennett, were you going to say something?
No, oh, well, just in response to Director Sorum about what where I'm getting that information from, that's the information that was released by the Minnesota Department of Health last Thursday. They release it every Thursday. It's our, the 14 days average. And that was for Hennepin County. As of last Thursday, that was released, we're at 90. But if you recall, that data is actually about two weeks old. If you look at the University of Minnesota data, which is much more current, Hennepin County is at 121 per 10,000. So we have a long way to go before we're below 50.
Yeah, yeah. Last time I checked, you're right. It was 120, but for 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 Bloomington, I think the number was over 90 now, as you had mentioned.
Chair Corbin, the last week's data for Bloomington was over 100.
118.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, any other questions? No, it doesn't look like.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. So let's move on to our next item, the board member reports. Who would like to start? Director Olson?
As long as nobody's raising their hand. So I attended the CCAC, the Special Education Committee meeting. And to tie in with having Chief Potts here, they did discuss vitals app that parents can sign up for so that if they have a special education student who is maybe nonverbal or or for whatever reason, they're concerned about an encounter with a police officer, it could be anything, you know, witnessing something in a car accident or something. So I think it's good to get that out to the community as well as they were talking about having a type of town hall with a, you know, virtual town hall with a deep teacher, occupational therapist, an early childhood teacher, a psychologist and various people to kind of as a support group and somebody to ask questions to. And, yeah, I think, I mean, there's a lot of good information there for people who are interested. And so the next meeting is December, December 8th, I believe. So I just wanted to let everybody know about that.
Thank you, Director Olson. Did I see another hand? Oh, Director Davis.
Well, today we had our Bloomington Student Advisory Council meeting and we had a good number of students from Kennedy. We could use some more showing up from Jefferson because we want to hear more student voices. When they were asked what they thought they might be interested in doing in this year, it was interesting. They are very outward focused and thought of of having maybe a sale in the spring as people are cleaning things out and and then to use that money for maybe an intraschool event between the two high schools, like they had the dance last year. So to create some funding for that as well as groups within the schools that maybe don't have a booster club or something to support them. So I thought that was very good. They mentioned a couple of different things. So that was encouraging. They also gave us feedback about what it's been like to be on distance learning and that there have been challenges and they're actually appreciative of the new scheduling where they have their Google meets in the morning and then can work on their subjects in the afternoon. And they're also hoping that the new changes to signing into the hub will make it less confusing for them with attendance. So that was that was insightful to hear from their perspective. And that's what we we want to hear from our students and then know how to encourage them and maybe find some ways to be part of the solution. I also have attended in the past few months, a number of different professional developments through the Minnesota School Board Association. Last week, I was in a online session talking about equity in light of distance learning and how to look at that and understand it better. I thought it was very helpful and also a good review for some things that I've heard Dr. Mitchler share with us and go over with some of our others, people that have been teaching us. And I also was in a training for the pre-delegate assembly. Delegate Assembly is where different school board members from different regions are elected to be voting on legislative priorities that the Minnesota School Board Association will be advocating for our district. Um, that the Minnesota School Board Association will be advocating for our district. So, um, and some of those are regarding, um, specifically the attendance. And if we can get our funding, um, based on not this year's attendance for the following school year, but, um, going back a year because this year has been so unusual for so many districts. And it would be very negatively impacting. So that's just one of those. And if you have others that you are interested in, please contact myself or Nellie. Um, we are both on that delegate assembly, uh, which will take place December 2nd, I believe. So appreciate any feedback and, um, I can get some of those priorities emailed out to you.
I'm sorry, I have to, I have to correct dates, speaking of dates, because I keep a wrong date for the Special Education Committee meeting. Okay, CECAC is, um, the first Tuesday of each month, so it's December 1st. The date I was talking about is the date they were looking at for a town hall, you know, so December 1st is the next CECAC, Special Education Community Advisory Council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Sorum.
I thank you. I just wanted to mention to, to Beth, I did not attend the insurance committee meeting. I don't know if you did either the other day, so you can have some time. I'll yield some of my time back to you for that, but as long as Jake is still here, I just wanted to mention that we had the Community Education Advisory Committee meeting um, last, last week or whenever it was and had some good, uh, good discussion with um, our members of the citizens that are participating in it. And just a general thing statement to make is that participation is down naturally in, in most of the programs. For community ed and, uh, we had Mike Larson talking about the activity centers and the rentals and so forth and it's, and that's expected to be down a little bit. It's a bummer because, you know, most of the time in the winter or the breaks, we get a lot of people participating in tournaments and a variety of things like that. So that, that hurts a little bit too, but otherwise we're holding our own and, um, if Jake wants to correct me, he certainly has a prerogative to do that. But our next meeting is the 14th and so we always are looking forward to a new year and we've been recruited, trying to recruit some more citizens to participate in it and we have a wide variety right now. And we're looking for more.
Okay. Uh, anybody else? I see two hands up. I don't know if Director Bibi had wanted to say something else.
Oh, um, just, um, to talk about the insurance committee. Um, we have noticed that because of the pandemic, that people kind of, um, put off certain types of care and yet they, in the summer, they started to go back and, and take care of some of that. We do have, um, a few cases where we do have some people that are very sick and, and that happens within our insurance. And so those cases are high. I think there's three of them. Um, otherwise the care tends to be pretty stable. And if nobody, no other big cases come in, um, things should continue at a good, good rate. Um, there wasn't too, there, there weren't very many surprises. And what's happening in our district is typical of what's happening in other districts. So no big surprises. And that's it.
Thank you. Director Olson.
Oh, I wanted to say that while I was substitute teaching this last week, that one of the questions asked of the students, um, according to the teacher's plans was, what is one thing that worries you? And one student replied that nothing worries me because my parents do the worrying for me. And I wanted to share that because I want to give a shout out to I can't say who it was, right? For privacy reasons. So I want to give a shout out to any parent who that could apply to because I thought that was excellent that the parents are taking over the worrying for their child. Um, also at the closing circle, I asked, what did you like most about the day? And it was unanimous that it was recess. So while parents are home with their kids, you know, I told them, you know, you can do this when you're at home doing distance learning, you can have your own recess. So I'd like to, you know, let parents know that this is very important to your student and getting outside each day and being in nature and getting fresh air can do wonders for making a good day for your student. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah. I've also attended a, a good number of, of meetings, committees. But the, the list is kind of long, but you know, it's been MSBA, the pre-delegate assembly too, and, um, it's been meetings with AMSD and the District Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee met as well. And I also had the opportunity to attend the first affinity group of staff members in the district. So I was, was glad to be part of it and to be able to listen and you know, there's, there's a lot in there that is, uh, worth sharing with the board at some point and, you know, information that will be given to, um, Dr. Mitchler and Superintendent, and then, um, of course it'll be shared later with us. Yeah. I don't have anything else. I think everybody's done with reports. So we have, uh, Superintendent reports.
Great. Thank you. Two quick things. First, today, the Minnesota Department of Health launched a COVID testing site at Ridgeview Elementary School. It is being staffed by state personnel and members of the Minnesota National Guard. That will be conducted weekdays from noon to 6:00 PM. You can get more information about this program on the Minnesota Department of Health website. And the testing will run through December. The other thing is on, thank you to Dennis Kane and the members of the Bloomington Public Schools Advocacy Council and our Bloomington legislators for participating in the virtual legislative forum last week, Monday. People can view that forum on BCTV. Just look, the schedule is, is listed there. And last, and this is a season to give thanks, so I want to give, express thanks to the entire community for their patience, understanding and support in our efforts to keep kids safe, engaged and learning this school year. So thank you, everyone. Best wishes for safety and good health during this Thanksgiving break. That concludes my report, Chair Corbin.
Thank you, Superintendent. And yeah, once again, thank you to every single person who is part of the Bloomington schools community. I won't, I won't say specific thank yous because it seems like the list is very long. We always end up, you know, we're getting something, we're not forgetting anyone. It's just the list is really too long to remember every single one at once. Uh, but yeah, and thank you board members. Um, any other business? No? Okay. So it looks like we're ready for adjournment. So anybody like to move a adjournment of the meeting?
So move. Bibi?
Second.
Sorry.
All right. So that was moved by Director Bibi and second by Director Sorum. Yeah. Okay. Those in favor of ending our meeting now, please say aye. Director Bibi?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
Director Steiger?
Aye.
And Corbin? Aye. I don't think I missed anyone, right? Okay. So the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.